Good morning, I'd like to call to order please the council of the whole meeting for April 17th. Uh, we will start with council announcements. Councilor Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Uh, since April is Earth Month and our city kicks and our city is kicking off cleanup green up event this Friday. I'm getting into the spirit by hosting some parks cleanups in my ward. And we'll start at David Hamilton Park on 20th this Saturday. Then Landstaff Community Park on 23rd this Sunday. And followed by Kings College Park on the next Saturday 27. And wrapping up by um DDO Park on the 28th next uh Sunday. So all this event aimed to transform our parks into beautiful tiny spaces as we prepare to welcome the summer. So I'd love to see all my neighbors pitching in and come join us for some fun and let's keep our city clean together. That's all my announcement, thank you.
Thank you, and next we have councillor Twee.
Thank you so much, Miss Madam Chair. So through you, Madam Chair, to all the audience also especially for the Waterford Council, Waterford uh residents. And this weekend, we're gonna host a cleanup events uh in the Waterford Mainly. We have around 20 parks in the school. I send newsletter already, also uh uh far more social mediums, so I want everyone welcome join. So the schedule time is Sunday 3 uh to 4:30 around 20 parks. If you have time, please join us. If you don't have time, please find out time and clean up your street or your neighbors neighborhood as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and next we have councillor Silvitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everybody. Um same vein, uh we have a cleanup in Ward 5. Uh, thank you to the Mara Residence Association. Um, it'll take place at Maplewood Park and uh the time is at 10 o'clock. So I hope to see as many uh many Ward 5 residents there as possible. Um, the Chair of Mara is right here in our audience. This is Pat Pollack, and um if you need any further information, please don't hesitate to contact my office. Uh, but I look forward to us greening up Richmond Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any other announcements. Next, we move on to adoption of the agenda. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do you have a remark? Oh, sorry, introduction of emergency times sensitive matters. No, next we'll move on to adoption of the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, thank you, uh through the chair to the committee. Uh, earlier today, one of the registered delegates had withdrawn their request, so I suggest when you're adopting the agenda, you do so noting that the delegation request from Franklin Dong has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Um, do we have someone to adopt the agenda with the removal of one delegate? Uh, Mayor West, thank you. Next disclosure, oh, do we second? Why do I never? Okay, Karen, councillor Silvitz, yes? Oh, the vote, uh, all those in favor. Unanimous. Next, disclosure of pecuniary interests and general nature thereof. Seeing none, moving on to identification of items requiring separate discussion. Mayor West.
Uh, thank you, I would uh I I'd like to pull 11-3. Uh, and I probably wanna talk about 11-6 as well.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing none.
Actually, is councillor Shu, are you good, did you wanna pull 11-6?
Actually, this is exact number, if uh 11-13 and 6, that I want to pull out.
Okay.
And thank you, Mayor West.
All right, well, why don't we split the difference? I'll do 11-3 and you could do 11-6.
Thank you, now adoption of the remainder of agenda items. Councillor Silvitz, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. And next we have public hearings. Seeing none. And now we move on to presentations. None. Next, we have delegations and our first delegate is Kenneth Chan, 448 Balkan Road regarding the proposed official plan amendment and by Linzau amendment for 122, 124, and 126 Cartier Crescent. And are you here, sir? Oh, come on up to the microphone, welcome. You have five minutes, right there, the big one there. Yeah, thank you. The floor is yours.
Good morning, uh Mayor West, members of council, city officials and staff and other residents of Richmond Hill. Uh, I've been living in this town for around 12 years. I've been in Oakridges community and now I'm in the Crosby community. I have a young family here and I feel this is a great place to raise a family. So I'm just using uh this time to raise a few thoughts about the proposed development. So my approach was to look at proposals of uh similar requests that I wanted to amend zoning bylaws. And I found one at 9496 Church Street. I have that in email I sent, I think it's ZPLA dash 23 dash 006. That's right by the Elgin Barrow Arena. So that was similar to the this proposed proposal because it's also a condo that's right beside residential homes. And the first topic is the visitors parking. Uh, in North America, the standard parking spot is eight and a half feet wide and eighteen feet in length. So the proposed visitors parking spot is, I think it was 17 feet from the neighbor at 120 Cartier. So that's almost less than a parking spot from from the individual's living room. And furthermore, the farthest parking spot towards Balkan is about 30 feet from my three-year-old's bedroom. That's pretty close, I'd say, to where he sleeps at night, so. And then the second topic is the is that the original proposal was eight stories with an FSI of 3.45. And the current proposal has it down to seven stories. So it went from 24.85 meters to 23.18 meters, and that's only a 1.7 meter reduction. That's about like this this high, that's that's all they reduced it by. We were hoping for a lot more than that because there's a lot of uh shadowing. So again, the Church Street location, that's five stories and 19.81 meters. It's also beside homes but significantly shorter in stature. Uh, the the shadow study showed that in the winter mornings, my house is completely enveloped in shadows. The shadow even goes towards my neighbor uh across the street. It covers right across Balkan Road. So with with these shadows, I mean, it would affect our gardening and and our flowers that we plant for Richmond Hill Bloom. And then my next topic is petition. We started one last week. We didn't do a lot of uh door-to-door requests or media requests or anything, but there's already strong opposition. It reached 200. I think it doubled yesterday. And then the final point is, I guess the the I was concerned about the finances after I was sent a letter from from the lenders. I was worried that if the project went started to happen and then financial issues happened, what would happen? Would we have a an eyesore there that half-completed project? So I'm not against development. I understand we need to build more to same same growth in the city. But I think that resoning it to a six, seven, or eight-story condo is out of character. I think perhaps townhouses or smaller developments is more in line with recent builds down the Bayview corridor. So uh, yeah, I hope we can keep it a little nicer, a little north. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have David McKay from MHBC Planning. You have the floor for five minutes, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, uh Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh staff. My name is David McKay. I'm a registered professional planner representing the applicant. Um, we are uh in support of the staff recommendation. We've worked diligently with staff to address a number of the comments over the last number of years, including comments raised by the public through the various uh meetings we've had, as well as the uh commentary received by council in terms of traffic, uh water table, servicing matters, and the like. Uh, with regards to this proposal, it is, uh yes, it is intensification. It is different from what uh is in the neighborhood, but that does not mean it's uh not compatible. And city staff have agreed, have reviewed the proposal and confirmed from a planning perspective that the proposal is compatible and we agree with that uh commentary. With regards to my friend who just spoke, uh he raised a number of issues. And with regards to those matters, uh in terms of the visitor parking, uh the parking area along the west side uh is will be screened with landscaping and fencing to reduce impacts on the adjacent neighbor. Uh, and staff have reviewed that and accepted that opposition. Uh, with regards to height, um, the request is for seven stories. But I, the usable portion of the building in terms of units is six stories. The seventh floor is is deemed to be a story because we have an amenity room on the roof to utilize efficiently the rooftop as amenity space. And that's why we're at seven stories. But the actual building itself above that would be six stories. We're basically utilizing, because we're doing geothermal uh heating and cooling of the building, we're able to use the mechanical penthouse, which would be in the same location for usable space and to optimize that rooftop for for that. So the reduction has been significant from eight down to six stories. Uh, with regards to the shadows, uh there is shadow impact, that's no doubt. I mean, the position of the building, the positioning of of the adjacent properties. Uh, however, that shadowing is off of those uh those sites at the equinoxes at in the spring and the fall by 10 o'clock. So the shadows are minimal, they do impact, but it is not uh does not arise to a planning impact in our opinion and that of staff. Uh, lastly, there's this discussion about financial wherewithal of my client. That is not a planning matter to be considered. Notwithstanding that, the issue there is my client is refinancing the site to deal with future construction. And that is the commentary that has been discussed between their financial party and themselves. And somehow, a letter got out to an adjacent neighbor, I don't know how. But there is no issue whatsoever about the financial wherewithal of my client. They are proceeding with this project, which will deliver 139 new residential units, including uh affordable housing units being provided uh uh ownership of affordable housing units uh through one of their various partners that they do partner with in terms of providing affordable housing in their projects. So with that, we have to answer any questions that council may have or respond to any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ian Anders of Goodman. Welcome. You have five minutes. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Morning Chair Davidson, Mayor West, members of council. Nice to see you all again. My name is Ian Andres with Goodman's LLP and I'm here today on behalf of the owners and applicants, Acorn Development Corporation and its related entities, to speak to item 11.5. And I'm here to speak in support of the applications and the staff recommendation report. Uh, as you probably know, this is the culmination of a lengthy planning process uh for applications, official plan and zoning amendment that were first submitted about three and a half years ago in a different form. And as the staff report notes, I'm not gonna dwell on the the original application, but I just wanted to comment on it for a moment. Um, this is a site that fronts on Major Mackenzie Drive, just west of Young Street. It's about a 500-meter uh walk to Young Street and a little more than that to the BRT station at Young and Hopkins, meaning that this site is considered part of a strategic growth area as that term is defined in the growth plan. Major Mackenzie is also a regional rapid transit corridor as designated in the York Region Official Plan, which means this site is very well-suited near the confluence of two of the most important arterial corridors in York Region. Um, so for that reason, the original applications proposed greater density and taller buildings on the site than is uh part of the revised application before you today. And the reason for that is the applicant was trying to respond to the local development area designation, um which currently exists at the western portion of the site and on the adjacent institutional lands from the city's 2010 official plan. There was townhouses proposed along Arnold for transition, and there was taller buildings proposed along Major Mackenzie. And although Acorn's intent was seeking to optimize uh the site and to deliver new housing, looking ahead to the needs of the community over the next few decades, it did become clear in the initial discussions that some people were uncomfortable with that level of change and intensification for this site. So rather than appealing to the tribunal, Acorn instead decided to engage in a lengthy working group process with members of the local community, uh including several representatives of the Village Core Residence Association. And these discussions were facilitated to some extent by Mayor West, then the councillor, councillor Shepherd, councillor Tree. I know you're all somewhat involved. Um, I myself was not directly involved, but I'm told those discussions were candid, uh respectful and productive, and ultimately they did produce results. Because based on the feedback received, Acorn made several concessions and changes to its proposal, reducing the heights of the taller buildings along Major Mack significantly and reducing the density. So the tallest buildings are now eight stories along Major Mackenzie. The internal buildings were reduced to six stories and the townhouses remain on Arnold. The overall FSI was reduced from what was originally proposed at 2.35 to 1.65, and that's where it stands today. Um, so while the amount of new housing has been scaled back, the revised proposal will still deliver over 500 much-needed units, a short walking distance from Young Street with a healthy mix of small, medium, and large units, including a significant number of accessible and affordable units. And we submit that this represents an appropriate amount of development on a site that's large enough to accommodate this type of development without creating any negative impacts on the surrounding properties or public realm. Um, through its layout and design, the proposal provides a comfortable transition to the low-rise neighborhood and the buildings are well below the angular planes. We did notice that late last night, a letter uh showed up on the council agenda um for Mr. Chapnick, who was part of the working group process, suggesting that a couple of further changes were warranted to the proposal. We do not agree with those further changes. We were quite surprised actually that Mr. Chapnick submitted this letter. Uh, he was part of the working group and we had understood that the working group fully signed off on the design. So it's unfortunate that those comments were made at the last minute and we were not made aware of them until we checked the council agenda at the very end. But nevertheless, it's clear the working group is very much in support of this application still. And no one else has raised any concern. So um as you can see, your staff are fully supportive of the revised proposal. And uh we would respectfully request that you follow along. Just a couple of other comments. The proposal will establish a new attractive public walkway. Take them out of time. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so the the walkway and the um path connections that it would create towards the open space in the parklands to the west was made possible through these negotiations. There was also successful discussions with the TRCA about um the Stormwater Conveyance Channel, which is now proposed to be piped under the site uh along with a biosquail to handle the the spillage. And that will enable a win-win solution because it'll create a new public amenity that all the members of the community can use. So in summary, we believe this revised application is a very positive example of the applicant persevering through a lengthy process and making reasonable and measured changes in response to feedback received. And I commend to you the written submission of uh Mr. Rajimpur, who's provided a sincere and passionate plea for bold decision-making. I noticed that on the revised agenda last night as well. And of course, we support the recommendations in the staff report. And we request that this committee and council endorse the recommendations, approve the applications, and direct staff to bring forward the amending bylaws.
Thank you, thank you so much. Your time is up.
Appreciate it.
No problem, thank you. Um, next, we're moving on to other business, 11.3. And that is the environmental strategy progress report. And Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, uh Madam Chair. I I I don't actually have any questions on this report, but I just didn't want it to pass on consent because I think it's a, it every year we get this report and I think it's a really good news story that I think it I it needs to, it deserves mention. Um, I I really uh I I think that the the progress that we've made on an environmental strategy where we've committed to doing the things that we need to do to be leaders in the environment in our community uh is well outlined in this report. I I really appreciate over the years how we've evolved into being able to communicate uh that those successes better. I mean, as we grow and as, you know, a couple of applications draw on the agenda today where, you know, we're seeing more intensification and 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 so on, we are also working at the same time to make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can to not only uh maintain a good environment, but actually make our environment better. And um I really appreciate the work that the uh environmental group uh has done recently, but it also has done for all the years that I've been on council and beyond to really take a stewardship role uh in Richmond Hill to make sure that uh, you know, we're doing what we can. Um, the Community Energy and Emissions Plan, uh very proud of that, that we're taking um a leadership role on uh on it, you know, greenhouse gas emissions and protecting our our citizens from the effects that that climate change is is already having in our communities. Um, and there's just such a wide range of activities that are being taken in this um in this report, in this strategy uh progress report. And so I would really encourage uh members of the of the public to take a look at it. The um, the materials that accompany this report are are really easy to digest and and read. Um, and I'm just want to encourage staff to make sure, as they do, to make sure that all of that information gets put out uh in a form that that the public can understand. Because a lot of the work that we do as a municipality to protect the environment is is obviously good and the leadership that we uh produce is good. But when other people also take up the baton and do the things that they need to be able to do in their municipalities, um I think the uh effects become amplified. And as we talked about earlier in the um in the council announcements, we've got a couple of uh councillors and I know all of us participate in one way or the other on these community cleanups. And um, you know, this is a way, a very tangible way, it's only one uh way that uh the community is taking responsibility for the uh the litter that is unfortunately finds its way into the community, but we're taking the responsibility to make sure that it gets cleaned up. And those are the kinds of things that I think we need to do more of um to work together as a team uh and a community to make sure that we're all living in the in the best environment that we can. So I just want to thank the staff for the work they're doing and continue to do and and I look forward to next year's report as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councillor Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thanks for sharing the staff report.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Don't worry about it.
I'm sure I made a mistake, as usual.
I I thought it.
I I I I received it.
This, thank you for grant.
Thank you, ma'am. Over to you, my apologies.
Okay, no problem. So uh, thank you for sharing the staff report and it's great to see the effort our teams has put into protecting the environment in our city. Much appreciate that. Uh, just one quick question, because I've been uh getting some inquiries from the neighbors about the German Mills Creek. And they are concerned about the garbage and the fallen trees blocking the creek. And I understand uh that uh parks of the creek fall under the jurisdiction of the regional government and TRCA, not only our city. And my question is, do we have any plan or environment strategy in place uh to work with these parties to clean up the creek on a regular basis?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would assume that that a request has been made through access Richmond Hill to have staff go out and inspect the the creek. That would be the first step in the process. Uh, and then we would work with other agencies to get it cleaned up and make sure it's flowing.
But some parks of the creek is not uh fall under our jurisdiction. So we have to work with the other party or or just do bar, just them by our staff or they just want to know which party for which part of the creek?
Through you, Madam Chair, that that's correct. There there are different sections that are owned by a different, I I believe, both public and private privately. Um, and we would work with them to to clean it up, yeah.
Okay. Okay, maybe we'll, I I can talk to the staff offline, maybe, yeah, because it's quite specific area. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Next, we, oh, can we have a vote, please? All those in favor of receiving the report? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we move on to 11.4, request for approval for 122, 124, and 126 Cartier Crescent. And I believe Will's, uh Mayor West, are you are you ready to
Sure.
move this? And over to you, thank you.
I'd be happy to move the um the recommendations. Um, first of all, I want to thank the um the citizens that came today and to give their input and also the citizens that uh signed up to and were a part of uh uh councillor Thompson's uh meeting the other day. Um, you know, I I I think that this is, this has been in the works for quite some time now and um and I I fully understand uh the public's position that, I mean, really, at the end of the day, um, no one really wants anything to be built uh next to them that's going to be different than what's there now. And I and I totally understand that and and I would feel the same way frankly, myself. Um, the problem that we run into, I think, with that on in this day and age is that um along our corridors, there's going to be a certain level of intensification. I mean, along Bayview, there isn't going to be very much, but it there is going to be quite a bit more along, say, Young Street, for example, in our key development areas. But the thing, I I was actually very impressed with the design of this building in and of itself. I mean, aside from the location and the concerns that were were put forward about that location, which are are valid for sure. The building is, I think, very well-designed. Um, there's a number of features about the building that I think are exciting. Um, to me, anyway, one of them is that, um, you know, we are looking at the the high likelihood and in fact, I guess, in some cases certainty, that there will be um a number of units in there that are affordable by the definition of affordable, but also affordable certainly uh in relation relative to the other types of housing units, for example, that are in that area. The reality that we're running into, and and we've seen this in the news and we've seen this across the country, is that we have a real housing crisis going on in our community where we don't have the range of housing that we need to be able to accommodate people from different income ranges to live here. I was talking to somebody just the other day. Um, he's like a nuclear physicist and uh he's concerned that he may not be able to live in Richmond Hill. And frank frankly, he said he wasn't even possibly able to live in Canada. Um, so that is very disturbing because, I mean, people at that end of the uh income spectrum all the way down to much lower income spectrums, we need all of those people to live in our community to be able to have a complete community, but also to have a community that is uh is it has the people living there that can create a vibrant economy. Um, so I I will, I I know that it's been referenced in this, that uh we are looking for affordable housing in this and through the site plan process, I'm trusting that staff will be able to do as much as we possibly can to to create as much affordability in that project as possible. Um, I am also really impressed about the idea of having geothermal in that um building. I think that's very much consistent with the types of construction and and energy-saving techniques that we um can can see in in some of the new construction builds. Um, one of the things I I I think is something that I wasn't sure that I saw this in detail in the uh staff report. Um, and maybe I'll ask staff, is there going to be some sort of a physical buffer be on the perimeter of that property, like um, you know, for example, a fence of some sort, like a privacy fence? And I I suppose that would be uh established for sure during the site plan process, but can somebody comment on that?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mayor West. Um, so those are details that will be sorted out through the site plan process, but I can tell you that there are sufficient landscape buffers being provided around the perimeter of the site. And in terms of fencing and privacy, those will be dealt with at the site plan stage.
Okay.
And will be taken into consideration.
And just to be clear to the public, I mean, this is the approval of the zoning and the official plan amendment, but the the nitty-gritty details beyond the kind of the box that we're talking about will be dealt with through the site plan process. But I I'm I'm just saying right now, I mean, I think it's really important that um I I believe that this building does provide the necessary policy-related buffers to the rest of the community and and, you know, that's great. But the, you know, the details about, you know, having headlights shining into people's windows um and and all that kind of stuff, I mean, we need to be able to deal with that and I trust that we will during the site plan process. With the time that I have available left, I just wanted to mention that there have been some significant reductions in the numbers of units and the and and even the height and the and uh the the form of that building since it was um first proposed, and I appreciate that, working with staff. The reality, though, at the end of the day, I mean, council does have the opportunity in any case to deny an application. But um I really do believe an application like this is as good as it's likely going to get. And if we do decide to deny it and it goes to the Ontario Land Tribunal, I really don't have any reason to believe that we would win uh anything substantial. So I I think this is what we are faced with in a lot of cases. So I I think this is what we are faced with in a lot of cases on council. But, you know, I think we are where we are and and I'm happy to move this recommendation and 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 get the ball rolling on this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Thompson.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I I do want to thank everybody who has, well, first attended the residents' meeting. I thank the applicant for providing a thorough explanation of the proposal. I also want to thank all the residents who have reached out to me since that that meeting, expressing their concerns and providing me with their questions. And and so at this point, I actually want to bring some of those questions forward to make sure that we understand what exactly is is part of this proposal. So one of the things that was brought up, and this was brought up by the agent for the applicant, and that is about the default mortgage payment document that was circulated. And I I did reach out to the the firm that actually put out that letter. I did not get a response back. I do know that there was an expiry date on there, so I I really don't know what did or didn't happen after that. I did speak with our legal department briefly on that. And basically, my understanding is that when it comes to financials with, you know, the property owner, that's an area that we do not get involved with. So it seems to be it's outside of our purview, but just to confirm that, if we could have legal express the on that matter, that would be appreciated.
Through you, Madam Chair. With respect to financial considerations, when we consider development planning applications, the Planning Act does not have a requirement to take that into consideration. We deal directly with the validity of the applications before us, and we consider all the planning matter merits of the application. Finance is not one of the items that comes to the fore when we review applications.
Much appreciated. Through you, the Chair. So, yes, exactly. We we can only look at the application itself, and I get that. A couple of things have already been addressed here, the privacy fencing, the the parking. But sticking with parking, I do want to perhaps ask a question of the applicant. And that is for the underground parking, will there be roughens for EV charging?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe there will be. I don't have those details, but that is a standard kind of component that we will work with staff on through the site plan process. And given the the amount of EV vehicles that are coming on board in the marketplace, I think it's just makes good future proofing of the building. So I believe that will be the case.
Okay, thank you. Certainly take that away as as a comment if if nothing else. The next question that was brought to my attention was that a suggestion that York Region Environment Assessment Study had identified a capacity concern for traffic along Bayview Avenue. And I'm just wondering if if staff could actually speak to that particular item. Thank you.
Through the Chair to councillor Thompson. As it relates to traffic servicing, all the other engineering-related matters, staff did undertake a thorough review of all the information that's been supplied by the applicant. And staff is satisfied that the road network servicing and any other technical engineering matter can be satisfied at the site plan application stage. And that's also reinforcing what Mr. McKay from MHBC has stated earlier in his comments to council.
Thank you through through the Chair. I guess the question was specific to information that was found in the York Region Environmental Assessment Study. I believe, and I'd have to go back to my emails, but maybe I'll circle back to that, looking at the time that I have left. Because I do have a concern, I mean, with the traffic just this morning coming here. I'm coming across Centre Street and I have to cross Bayview. And we can do all the traffic studies that we want, but it took me three lights to get across Bayview Avenue because of the behavior of people that are on the roads. So if everybody followed the rules of the road, yes, I agree, there wouldn't be a problem. But what happens is they're blocking the intersection. They get caught in a red light and they're sitting there on Bayview and I can't get across. So I just had to throw that out there. Sorry. So another question that I received was, has there been a shift towards increased intensification along Bayview Avenue since 2020? And since I was not a councillor here in 2020, I'd like to throw that out there to anybody who might be able to answer that question. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, there's been a few applications along the the, what I'll call the minor arteries, not Young Street. But this is not a shift that we're seeing completely along that those corridors. Where applications do come in and they they do make sense to consider in terms of intensification, we have reviewed them accordingly. So it's not that we're going to see full intensification along those corridors in the future. That's certainly not something that we envisioned through the official plan update.
Thank you. And through the Chair, there's also a comment that there wasn't anything in the report that appeared to suggest that the school boards had been consulted. But if you can just confirm that the school boards were consulted and whether they had any issues with the project, that would be appreciated.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the applications were circulated to the school boards. We did not receive any objections or concerns from them as part of the application review.
Thank you. And through Madam Chair, another question would be in regards to a high water table. There was mentioned that there was problems in the past, particularly on Balkan Road, with the high water table and how that might impact this particular proposal. Do we have any information on that?
Through you, Madam Chair. As noted previously and a number of the comments here, we are at the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment stage. We have received supporting documentation that address a number of matters, including geotechnical, et cetera. Certainly, as part of the initial review, there is not a concern that's been identified in that manner. But we are going to go, obviously, through the detailed site plan stage. And any issues that do come up will be addressed at that stage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we do go to a second round, I do have a few more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Tree.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo something here I experienced. The first one is, if you look at the map, if you drive along the Bayview Street from Bloomington until Highway Seven, entire cross, entire Richmond Hill, there is no high building, except one is close to the Highway Seven, which is opposite of the supermarket. That's the only one high building. We drive that 16th Street, 14th Street, Blackmore Areas, Agamis, and the Bloomington, we have not such fun. So from character perspective, this proposal is really changing the entire street of Richmond Hill. We don't have such high level. So it's dramatic change. I just want to bring this one to everyone. If you ever drive along the Bayview Street. The second one is the traffic. This morning, I drove, sent my kids to Crosby. I came out from Bayview Street. I did not go through the Bayview Street. As long as every time I cross there in the morning, come to office, turn from Bayview Street to Metro Mac was a headache. It's it, and I never have any good time during the morning hour at all. So along that area, Metro Mac and Bayview, that's our Bayview Secondary School. You can imagine during the rush hour, morning, and also afternoon, it was a really disaster. I could not turn either left or right side. So I have been choosing a small path, which is a red road, cross the Bayview to go through the drive, that's our come to our office every morning like this way. So from my parents, as a parent, as also a driver, I would prevent to have more high density buildings along that area. If this building is suitable along the Young Street or other utter intersections, makes sense. But here in the middle of nowhere, at seven floors over there, and also leading traffic jamming already really bad. So it's very challenging personally to support this plan. But, you know, yeah, we we know our city has a lot of the housing crisis and we need a bright, more affordable housing for residents. But the location, location, the location, we need to find out the good location to intensify our housing, affordable housing facilities. At this location, I don't see there is a good opportunity for me to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for your information, the next building on Bayview is going to be on Bayview and Major, sorry, Bayview and Elgin Mills. But I can understand because it's too arterial road. But going back to this application, thank you for the report. I appreciate it. It's a, this is a positive report, but I I still have a few concern. First of all, when I, when you look at the report, you say, oh, it's pretty good because there's a reduction of density, there's a reduction of height, there's some affordable housing units in there. But when you look at the map and when you look at the rendering, is it is quite a surprise to me because, you know, among all those single detached homes, it's going to be a standalone building there on Bayview and Cartier. Through you, Madam Chair, to staff, my first question is, is there going to be a traffic light at Cartier? In the future? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through the Chair to councillor Liu, at this time, I'm unaware if there's going to be a traffic light. And through the site plan application process, staff will be reviewing. I can add that the region has indicated that they have no intention to widen the road and they've taken as staff growth information and population to 2041 and the current configuration of the municipal and the regional road network in accommodate this development application. And this is already contained within the 16-page report that outlines that staff is satisfied with the proposal before council today.
Thank you very much. The point I'm trying to make is is the traffic on Bayview is already very hard, very busy. And then if there's 163 units, the car is trying to go north. If they go out on Bayview on a rush hour, I I it is going to be very chaotic. And if they want to go north, then they have to go into Cartier and then go across, go north until they reach Crosby. And then you will have a traffic light on Bayview to go north. So I don't know how it's going to be impacting the neighborhood when people are trying to go north. First, if they try to go on, go out on Bayview to turn left, is I don't know how possible this is. And when they need to go to Crosby, they have to go inside to all those streets, Balkan and Felix and, you know, those streets to go Crosby to go north. So that's a traffic light there. So the point I'm trying to make is, I can understand if this is at the corner of Bayview and Crosby, it makes more sense to me. But if is on Bayview and Cartier, is 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 very, it's very tough for me. What three is just across the street, there is some residential area there. This is going to be a a big standalone building. The next question I have is access point. So I'm quite surprised that there's no access point on Bayview. So the region doesn't allow an access point on Bayview. So there's only one points through you, Madam Chair, to staff. Am I correct, which is on Cartier?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is correct. And just to comment, that is typical of the region to try and limit the number of access points onto Bayview Avenue.
Okay, thank you. I I I appreciate that. But, you know, with one access point with 163 units building in terms of fire emergency and stuff, is it okay? Because usually, I understand, we need two access point.
Through you, Madam Chair. Again, I'll reiterate, we are not at the site plan stage right now. That's a matter that will be looked at as part of the actual site plan review.
Thank you very much. So, well, I I'm I'm struggling on this one, even though I know that, you know, there's a positive staff report. But I think there's, that's something needs to be modified. Thank you.
Councillor Silivitz is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this report and for everybody who spoke. I I agree. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I agree with with councillor Liu and I would hope that the region does look very carefully at that intersection. And hopefully, it can be signalized because I I totally understand where where the problems could could lie there. So I I hope that through our engineering departments and traffic, that'll be looked at with the region. And I I just wanted to read in the staff report on page eight, consecutive page 68 of 205, the the eighth paragraph, it says, staff has evaluated the applicant's development proposal in relation to the applicable land use, height, density, design, and compatibility, as well as housing affordability policies of the plan, and is of the opinion that the development proposal has appropriate regard for and is consistent with the overarching planning principles of the plan, and that it represents good. It might irk us, but but that is what it, that's, that is what is stated here by our professional staff. And and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on first round?
I'd like to make a few remarks. I am, I I do empathize with the resident who spoke about their backyard being shaded all the time. And the applicant talked about the Equinox, which I know that twice a year. But could staff please address that? Is there, is there evidence that residents, existing residents won't have shaded backyards all day, all year? Is there any any way to 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 speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair, or to you, Madam Chair. So the the applicants have provided us with a detailed shadow study. And there are some times of the day where the backyards will be partially covered in shadow in the mornings, in the winter months. But staff has evaluated that and it is still acceptable levels of shadow. So they won't be constantly in shadow. I mean, there will be some shadow impacts, but they are acceptable at this point.
Thank you. I also just want to make a comment. This is about traffic for my my colleagues. I actually start driving down Bayview at closer to Bloomington. And I can't even get out of my neighborhood at Bloomington, which tells me that I'm not an engineer, but if we build this or not, the traffic's coming from north of Richmond Hill. It's coming from Aurora and Newmarket and anywhere else where everyone's trying to avoid the 404. So I don't doubt that, well, I take Bayview. It's 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 terribly slow. But I also think we can't keep saying no to things that may provide smaller units and better housing. And I don't see how we can say no to this if it fits all the provincial guidelines, if staff supports. Of course, none of us want a big building in our neighborhood, but there's just no way around it to provide growth and housing. And hopefully, this is going to facilitate better public transit because it's getting to the point where you can't drive down Bayview or Young or Bathurst or Leslie. So I will support this application. And I I know it's a bitter pill for people who live in the area, but unfortunately, that's progress, in my opinion. So those are my comments. And councillor Thompson, would you like second round? Over to you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much. Through you, the Chair. I did have one more question and it does, it has to do with parking. I noticed in the appendix that and a question came up about the size of the parking spaces, but this is more internal, I guess, that there's a 10% compact parking spaces. And I'm just wondering how that gets determined? Is that part of a typical standard? Could somebody speak to that for me? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. This is a trend that we're seeing across the board with respect to higher density developments. It's just to provide different options for different types of vehicles, much as we talked about EV charging, et cetera. There are different types of vehicles and this, the There are different types of vehicles and this the smaller standard is is something that obviously will be reviewed as part of the site plan to make sure there's an appropriate mix of parking spaces.
Thank you. Through the chair, I do want to make a few comments here. I appreciate that when this application came forward at the public meeting in November 2020, a number of issues were raised regarding height, density, compatibility, transition, traffic, access, parking, shadow impacts, construction and servicing. But I do have to give some kudos here to the applicant because there's no question that they've worked diligently with our staff to try and address those issues. And on top of that, the applicant has actually taken steps to address affordable housing by partnering with a not-for-profit organization, which aims to assist in providing extra financial support for the buyer. I believe they're making five to eight units available as part of the overall plan. I did receive a question about accessible units. My understanding is that they're looking at 21 accessible units. Additional features, we've already talked about, the colleagues have mentioned here. And so in addition to the geothermal technology for heating and cooling, they're also looking at a green roof with also some rooftop trees. So there's there's a lot of things that are that are good. There's no question about this application certainly help us address our our missing middle. So yes, there's a lot to 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 like with the application. And as councillor Sullivan had said, from a land use perspective and a professional perspective, staff and the applicant feel that this development could fit in to the neighborhood. But in the end, it comes down to council has the ability to agree or disagree. The the whole thing with the traffic, like I said before, from a professional standpoint, sure, you know, the studies can certainly tell us all that. But what we see are behaviors on the road every day that make it quite impossible sometimes. So, you know, as much as the studies may say something else, behaviors certainly is something else that we have to deal with. And again, as much as I see how this development could address our missing middle and despite all the efforts made to reduce height, density, address those parking concerns, the privacy fence, all those those things, I still find that compatibility is an issue. My calculation suggests that we're still looking at permitting something that is seven times the allowable density within this neighborhood area. And after we recently completed our official plan amendments, where, you know, a lot of time, effort, resources went into identifying more appropriate locations for where we should be putting the housing to that that will meet our needs. I just, this this was not one of the locations, you know, and and this, we just did this not that long ago, all these OPAs. So you know, even though, like I said, there's a lot to like about this proposal, location is just not one of them. And for those reasons, I will not be able to support it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make remarks on second round? Councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. Is there any community benefits on this one? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. Those would be our general under our CBC bylaw, that would be the 4% value of the land that would be contributed to the city. So it's a standard, they would be they'd be applicable to this land as well, to this project.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, so I agree with one of our delegates that, I don't know, if it's a townhouse. Townhouse is complex. I would be more. I'll be more than willing to to support this, but you know, what in front of us is is a little bit tough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor, Mayor West.
Sorry, I I first of all, I want to just say I appreciate all the comments that were have been made by my colleagues today. And, you know, there's definitely been some points that were were made that have all been valid and 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 good points. There's been, there has been some comments from the delegates and also on from my colleagues about the issue with traffic. And I actually appreciate what councillor Davidson was saying. You know, as much as I do, I mean, I experience the same traffic every day as well on my way to work and in my travels around municipality, particularly in, you know, rush hour times. And that is a definite problem and it is a definite challenge that we're all facing in the the region and the city through, like, for example, our transportation master plan and the region's master plans are all making sure that we're getting as much investment in in transit and transportation infrastructure as we can and will continue to do that. The specific issue of a stoplight came up and and I don't disagree that it seems likely that we need to be looking at the possibility of a stoplight. However, I also know enough to, I mean, a little knowledge is a dangerous thing. And I guess when it comes to traffic engineering, I'm I'm a dangerous person because I'm not a traffic engineer. And that's why I will leave it to a full analysis from our professional trained traffic engineering staff to determine what the actual best solution is as opposed to what might appear to be. Just for example, you know, having too many traffic lights all in a row might might or may not be the the best thing to have in a situation like this. But I that's going to be left up to the site plan process to determine. And and if it is the best solution, then I think we need to do it, obviously. There was a comment about the character of the area and I totally understand that because it's certainly not in the character of the area as of this moment. There's no question about that. This is single detached homes that are all around that area. But I would point out that there are high high-rise, not high-rise, mid-rise buildings like this all up and down Bayview either now or there will be soon. Just last week, our last cycle, we dealt with one at Bloomington and Bayview. There is going to be one, as councillor Liu mentioned, at Elgin Mills in Bayview. There's a number of them that are actually up now, just to the east of Bayview, just off of Elgin Mills. This is a built form that we're going to start to see. And I mean, whether we like it or whether we don't like it, unfortunately, for those that don't like it, we are going to see it. Fortunately, for those that are looking for housing that's more affordable, they probably would be in favor of that type of thing. We, as a council, must consider all applications, no matter what's there, no matter whether it complies with completely with our official plan and zoning bylaws or not. And then our process and our staff makes a determination. Is this an appropriate application for this particular area or not? If the answer is, in the professional staff's opinion, it's not, that's fine, council can deal with that. If in a case like this, it is within the the bounds of good planning, so to speak, then we have to consider that. As I mentioned earlier, that, you know, we can, we can take something and and deny an application. It will probably almost certainly be appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And the problem that we run into with that is that I haven't heard really anything in this discussion today that would actually be the silver bullet that would allow us to win at the Ontario Land Tribunal. And that's problematic because as soon as it gets appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal, we stop being the development, or sorry, the approval authority. It it's up then to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And the applicant now is not dealing with the city per se, it's dealing with the OLT. And that in itself has has some hazards for our community. So as much as I do appreciate the comments that that my colleagues have made, this has been a really good discussion. And I very much appreciate the concerns that people in the neighborhood have. I don't see this as a an application that we would realistically, it would be to our benefit to deny. And as I mentioned earlier in my comments, and actually as councillor Thompson mentioned and a few others too, in fairness, I mean, there are a number of overall benefits to the community that I think we can't deny right now. And housing and affordable housing are certainly two of those benefits that provincial policy has dictated that we must be looking at and working towards. So that would be my opinion. I certainly respect the opinion of other members of council, but I will be happy to support this because I think it's the best thing for us to do as a as a community.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else?
I do, I do want to reiterate, as as a longtime resident and as a councillor now, Bill 23 from the province changed everything. I think there's no one here who wouldn't love something that looks like the neighborhood that's already there. But Bill 23 has told every municipality, you better start building and finding more units. And there's actually financial repercussions for a municipality that doesn't do that. So a lot of the planning has been taken out of our hands for a bigger picture about providing housing. And I think if you came here another time, maybe you'd get a different answer. But it really has tied our hands in terms of spending money to go to a tribunal that we can't win. We're going to be spending taxpayer money, we told, actually, we're going to let them do bigger, more. So that's the reality of it. And I'm I'm I'm, I understand everyone can't get behind it. Anyway, those are my comments. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Oh, you want a recorded vote? Can we have a recorded vote, please? Councillor Liu.
Thank you. Pardon me. Through the chair, voting on the motion moved by Mayor West to adopt the staff recommendations, councillor Liu.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
No.
Thank you. Regional local councillor Chan.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Tree.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Shu.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Davidson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor West. Thank you. And regional local councillor De Paula.
Yes.
Thank you. That vote does carry. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we go to 11.5, request for revised approval for 190, 210 and 230, Major Mackenzie. Would somebody like to move this councillor tweet? You have the, you're moving this? You have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I want to say appreciation to our applicants. I think this is a very unique case and applicants working with the council members, also with work staff, also working with community a lot. I think this plan was changed a lot. It's been working for three terms of council members here. And this plan actually modified a lot. So this is really the win-win situations for majority of the case. I I I've been here around one and a half a year as council members. And this is the first time I think this is really the very successful. The applicants work with residents together and make a lot of changes for based on the feedback from the public, from the community. And thank you so much for your hard work. Also, thank you for our city staff as well. I know this is really a tough one. We modified back in the first four years, the years, and thank you for your hard work too. I do have a few questions I want to ask on behalf of the residents. So the first one regarding to the FSI. I know the current FSI is pretty low and it's around 1.6 something. And one, there are three questions up from a community. The first one is, is there any additional space that we can lower down the FSI from 1.6 to 1.5?
Commissioner Lainis.
Through you, Madam Chair. As as was noted here, there's been a lot of work that's been done on on the site. The, there's been many years that that this application has been before us, a lot of consultation. I think what you have before you is a very good end product. I I can't see, I'm just looking at the site plan here, I can't see the opportunities to actually get the FSI even further reduced. The application that's before you is being supported by staff and it's something that that we think will work very well on the site.
Thank you so much. So my second question regarding to the Down Hyde Park and also for the accessibility of that park. Based on the current design, we do have a multi-use passes from the Arnold Street. So the resident asking, is there any way we can build up a kind of connections through this new planned multipass? Allow the residents from Arnold Street to travel to the Down Hyde Park, which is a little bit north.
Through you, Madam Chair. All opportunities to allow public access through the site to to abutting properties and the park are being looked at and that'll be something that we'll consider through the site plan process. It's certainly a comment we'll take back.
Okay, thank you so much. I would hope this one can be be multiple use for different purpose because the resident living on Arnold Street also from the nearby communities, they do have, maybe can use this one as a shortcut to access the nearby parks to have more fun and later time. The next question regarding to the designs, I'm not asking here, I'm just throughout the question on behalf of residents. I heard there could be some designing for the facade of the six floors buildings. Can I ask, is that could be very challenging or is it's just keep as it? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Again, we're going through the OP and zoning process here. Detailed designs are are to come and we'll be working with the applicant to to determine the final design. And certainly our urban design staff will play a critical role in that to make sure that the design is appropriate.
Okay, thank you so much. I do have my last question regarding to the Arnold Street reconstruction. As we all know, we just have motions or plans in there. We're going to reconstruct three streets, including Arnold Street, nearby two streets. My question here is, because if we through this project, there might be a startup or grant breaking very short term, very short time. My question here, is there any coordination from applicants, also from a city, when we rebuild this Arnold Street and nearby street as well?
Through the chair, councillor Tree. Absolutely. Staff are always coordinating with the applicant. Part of our process is to ensure while we're maintaining existing infrastructure in a state of good repair, that we're investigating to see what opportunities for current, proposed, future developments are in place. And the project for the reconstruction of Arnold originally required the replacement of certain infrastructure, specifically watermen. As we know, there's been several watermen breaks in the street. It's the opportunity for us to investigate through that replacement process. How can we accommodate future development? And that's exactly what took place here. So the teams are working together to ensure that the reconstruction of Arnold accommodates the existing residents as well as the new development.
Thank you so much. So we don't want the duplicate efforts. As long as we have a timeline, we can, or live, maybe we can save some budget, whether it's from a city perspective or constructor or applicants. So better we we work together to reduce any duplicate efforts. That is all from my side. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor, regional and local councillor De Paula.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. I I also want to speak in in support and in favor of the staff recommendations for approval to go forward with this application. It was a case where there is a very cooperative process throughout the public process. I think the application survived three different ward councillors. Many residents meetings since we first had our public hearing here. And the applicants showed time and time again to be very cooperative. This is a unique area, a very special area, so close to our historic downtown, but such such a critical transportation corridor and an and an area that we've targeted for for intensification through our official plan and and that the region is looking to really improve the transportation. Major Mackenzie will be the next middle of the road, viva bus rapid transit service and an east-west connection. And Major Mackenzie will be an important corridor where it meets Young Street, as as close as this site is. It's expected to have intensification. And at the end of the day here, the there's quite a compromise reached and the intensification, intensification that's ultimately being there, there's quite a compromise reached, and then the intensification, intensification that's ultimately being, uh, recommended for approval here is, is much, much lower than was originally proposed, or, or could, could be contemplated, uh, in other, um, in other bodies, and like the last application that we spoke of, I, 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 I would hate for Richmond Hill to lose control of this process, and, and we're, we're this applicant to, to go to the OLT. And if council was not to approve today, uh, we'd be really at the mercy of, of, uh, provincial policy and, and, uh, and our, our own, uh, ma- major transit station area designation from the region. So, uh, the, I, it, it's great to see when, 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 uh, an applicant accommodates the public in, in the manner that, that this application has. Um, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm fully, fully supportive of it, you know, it's a unique area and, and, uh, a, a unique applicant who has, um, take, take, taken a lot of time in, in, uh, in considering what's best for the area. But I also know, Mr. Mayor, and we know it's important that this, this applicant intends to build right away. And, um, if, if, if council does approve next week, this, this, I, I hope that it can move quickly to site plan. I think this is, uh, uh, one, one of those projects in the hopper that, that can, that can be, um, achieved quickly, and we can get to that, that, uh, building foundation stage to, to help to meet our provincial targets. Um, I, I'm quite confident, um, that the application, the, the applicant's intention is, is to move forward quickly um, and, and see this through. So I, I support, uh, our staff's recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And next we have Mayor West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, so this, uh, application, uh, to me, uh, has been, um, in the works probably for almost all the years that I've been on council. So, um, anyway, I, I've certainly spent a great deal of time with the community and a great deal of time with the applicants on this for, uh, I'm pretty sure I didn't have gray hair when I started with that, and maybe this is the reason I have gray hair now, I don't know. Um, but it's been through a number of different iterations, and, and to echo what, um, councillor De Paula was saying, um, I, I do have to say that the applicant has been very responsive in working with myself as, at the time, local councillor, um, and, and as mentioned, with the other two councillors that have served in that area since, uh, that time. But also with the community, there was a very robust, uh, public consultation that the applicant took, which I really appreciated, and it really did go above and beyond, uh, the call of duty for what was required of the applicant, and I do very much appreciate that. And I, and, you know, interestingly, I mean, we have nobody here today to, um, ab- object from the community. Um, and, and I can tell you for sure that a few years ago, if it had come to a council at that time, we would have been packed. So I really appreciate that we've, um, uh, you know, addressed the community's needs significantly. And again, this is very similar in a lot of ways to the previous application, like, no one in that neighborhood is like wanting this to happen. Um, but the reality is that, you know, these types of intensification projects that are more moderate than what you might see on, right on Young Street, um, you know, that are downright large in, in areas like that, um, that are in, you know, on the fringes of neighborhoods are, um, are, are going to be the kinds of things that are likely going to end up happening in communities, not just Richmond Hill, but any other urban community, um, that we have in the greater Toronto area. And, you know, this particular application, um, really has a, a significant amount because of, it's a relatively larger one than the one that we dealt with earlier, has a significant amount of, of affordability built into it, and I, I think that is so crucial. And, um, I can tell you right now through the site plan process, I am fully expecting staff to, uh, bake in and achieve all of the affordability that we can possibly get in this, in this project. It's, it's where, um, I think we can make some, some change in our ability to offer more housing that's affordable to more people. There are some issues that have come up, uh, and have been outlined, you know, by, uh, the applicant. Uh, sorry, not by the applicant, by the letter that we received, uh, that, you know, we still do have to go through a site plan process, and there may be some tweaks and things that have to happen to make it better. Um, but, you know, I, I'm confident that staff will make sure that we take care of all of the, the details that go into that. I just wanted to double check that, uh, and have it on the record. But one of the, uh, the things that have, have been on the books with me throughout this time that I was the ward councillor here, is that to make sure that we had a walkway that accessed the, uh, lands where the high school is and to the little park, um, there as well. That walkway is in the works, and it is in the plan, and it is going to happen, right?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, uh, that, that issue has been identified, and we will be working directly with the applicant, uh, to address that.
Okay. That's another thing that's really important, because it gives us the opportunity where it doesn't exist right now to have a, an, an access point from Arnold to the, to the, uh, the school and to the green space that's, that's there as well. And I think that's really important. I mean, I can, I'm hoping that high school students will be able to, you know, rush wildly as the bell is ringing and, you know, be able to make it to school on time because that walkway exists. Uh, but also the other, you know, people in the neighborhood that want to have a more walkable neighborhood. This is one of the, uh, linkages that we can provide that would allow that to happen, and I think that's very important. So I think that's, I'll leave it there, there. Um, I, I, again, I want to thank all the parties involved, and there have been many, many, many of them to get us to the point where we are today. And as regional local councillor De Paula said, um, you know, we still need to go through the site plan process, but the understanding that I have is that the applicant is planning on building, uh, at least the first phase of this, uh, relatively soon, and, and I will hope that that will happen, um, as expeditiously as, as possible. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have councillor Silvitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to staff, um, also for this very good report. I want to thank, um, Mr. Andres for addressing us here today. And, um, I, I, I've listened to all my council colleagues' comments, and I, I, I agree with, with them. Just a couple of comments that I wanted to make. Um, I actually want to commend this applicant's constraint with the, the six-story building because it could so much, so, so easily have been something else. Um, kitty corner to this particular location is an OMB-approved buil- building for fifteen stories next to the police station. So this could have been that as well. So thank you. I'd certainly appreciate that. And the FSI, it's, it's, I will always give credit where credit is due, and this is, this is one of those times. Um, this has been such a tired, empty space for so long, and, um, right across the road from Ward Five. And I drive, you know, along Arnold there very, very often, and I'm sure as much as we are happy to see that it's finally going to be developed, uh, probably the local residents feel the same way. It's on the west side of Arnold, and, um, I agree, the connectivity that this pathway will give us, uh, to the school and, and Arnold is, is going to be, I, I believe, will be a very, very good thing. Um, again, with the light at Arnold and Major Mackenzie, I would imagine that, uh, when we get to that stage as well, York Region is going to have to take a look at that light and make sure that it is, um, its timing is, is right. Right now, it's, um, you can, you can wait forever on Arnold for the light to change, uh, before crossing over Mackenzie either way. I've seen people get out of their cars and press the pedestrian button to make the light change. So, um, I definitely think that, 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 that should be looked at, and I know that our staff will, will do that with, with the region. So, um, a- again, uh, thank you. This is, uh, this is, this is definitely, um, uh, wanted and needed. And, um, I also want to thank you for, uh, for, uh, regional councillor, uh, De Paula saying that this, there will be shovels in the ground very quickly, as quickly as possible. And that is something that we, um, we rely on at this point in time, even more so than ever. So thank you. Um, that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other remarks. Um, I just wanted to make a small comment about the walkway. Is, I feel like those are the small things that will make that new development part of the old community. Because otherwise, it's us and them. Oh, that's the new part, this is the old neighborhood. So those kinds of touches really make a difference in the community, and maybe everyone will get to know each other a little more because they see each other. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Passes unanimously as far as I can see. Thank you. Moving on to councillor Shu, you pulled the Young Garden gateway. Over to you.
My pleasure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the staff report, and I'd like to move forward firstly. And I'm all for finding the most cost-effective way to use the tax base money in terms of time, uh, money, and limited manpower. My question is, do we have any information on this cost differences between retaining the original consultant versus trying out other ways like idea competition or open request for proposal to show, uh, any costs and times we can save? Is any figures or numbers on, on the report to show the differences?
So, um, through the chair, we, um, we have reviewed certain other, uh, ideas such as competitions or, um, securing another vendor. However, they were not as cost-effective as securing a vendor from an existing roster. Uh, it was the most time-efficient as well as, uh, financially efficient, uh, process moving forward.
Okay. Uh, through the Madam Chair, is, just in my opinion, it would be better to see some numbers on potential savings in the future, both in the terms of money and time on the staff report to get a better idea of whether sticking with the original consultant is the way to go. This is only my comment.
So through the chair, I would like to add to my previous comment. Um, currently, there is no financial implication because we're using existing capital budget. If we were to secure any other method of moving forward, we would potentially have to come forward to request more funding for the project. Uh, we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have exact numbers as to what the difference is. But in our research, we found out that the cost would be significantly more, and we would have to secure additional funding to it.
Okay, I see, understood. Um, and this, and the last question is, do we have any plan in place to enhance public consultation? Like hosting, uh, uh, public education section or PIC or something like that?
Uh, so through the chair, the idea is that as we progress with this project, public consultation will be a part of it, and the consultant will be engaging the public through that process. It is included within this project.
Do we have any time line with that?
Uh, through the chair, the, 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 the intention is to complete the project by the end of this year. So public consultation, we do have two public consultations built into the project, and it will be sometime starting this summer. And then the second consultation probably in the fall or, or late fall.
Okay, understood. That's all my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mayor West.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I'm, I'm interested and pleased to see this. I mean, having a, a gateway feature at, uh, the entrance to our city is, is exciting, and, and I think it's missing right now. So I think that's great. Um, I do know that, uh, and I, I would just comment that, you know, one of the things I would like to see more of in Richmond Hill is more public art. I mean, we really don't have very much in the way of that, and I think in terms of our growth and maturity as a city, um, that's something that, you know, people and would expect from, uh, you know, a mature and robust, uh, city, particularly one like Richmond Hill that has, you know, a good thriving and, and, um, you know, robust art community, I think. Um, so I'm, I'm excited about this project, and, and I'm also very cognizant of the fact that, you know, uh, public art, no matter, almost no matter what you're talking about, is not necessarily loved by everybody. I mean, it, there is a element of public art that it's supposed to be a little bit, supposed to make you think. It's supposed to be a little bit controversial and interpretive. But I think that being said, I think it's important that this piece of art, we are, you know, we, we ensure that it, it's, it, uh, you know, brings people together in whatever way that is, rather than, um, becomes a divisive issue. So I do appreciate the fact that we've done some public, um, input so far. I'm just wondering, is it, I don't, I mean, if it's, it's not appropriate, or if you don't have the, the information at your fingertips, I can follow up later. But is there some general themes that have come out of the survey and the, in the public input that we've received so far, like up to this point, that you can share with us?
Um, through the chair to the mayor. Um, currently, we, we did have a public consultation last, this was in May of twenty twenty-two. Sorry, we brought a memorandum forward in May twenty-two. We asked general questions about what they foresee a gateway feature to look like in Richmond Hill. Um, there weren't specific themes that were mentioned because the, the concept is sort of, um, uh, limited to being a vertical lighting feature because it is an essential median. Uh, but through, again, the idea is that through the future consultation, we could probably gain more insight into thematically what the design could look like.
All right. I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome of this. I mean, I, I think it's, um, it's important that it be iconic. It's important that it be, you know, representative of Richmond Hill and that, um, you know, and at the same time, you know, we've got to keep it cost-effective. Um, but I think it's important that we continue to do what we're doing and, and have the kind of public consultation that we've had and will have in the future. So happy to support this, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have councillor Silvitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you to staff for all the work that's been done here. It's, it's, it's been, it's gone from one term to another. Um, I do believe that we will get a very good design here ultimately, um, in front of us, no pineapples. Because that was a discussion in last term with the, the one design was pineapples, so no. Um, so I know we'll, we'll get something really, really lovely here. This is the gateway, um, entrance to, uh, Richmond Hill, uh, from the south. But I also think that, uh, the region and the city, um, should be looking at the gateway entrance to our city from the north as well, at Young and Bloomington. It's the same thing. It's also a gateway entrance. And as councillor Davidson said, there are many, many cars that come south down Young Street, um, from our northern neighbors, uh, that it's, it would be nice to have some kind of, um, a gateway feature there as well, welcoming and identifying, uh, Richmond Hill other than just a board. Um, uh, however, what I do want to say here is that knowing, uh, the constraints that we are under financially, I do believe that this is not an, it's, it's a non-emergent item. So, uh, while I understand it is part of our capital projects, um, I think that we, this is not something that we need to be jumping on and make sure that it's, it's immediately taken care of. While it will be nice to eventually have that gateway there, especially when the subway, uh, stop is actually, um, at, at that location, um, around Young and, uh, Young and Seven, um, then it would really be something spectacular. So, um, I look forward to this, um, but, um, I, I don't believe that our staff should be under any, uh, to get this done, um, uh, quickly, should there cap, be capital funding that is required elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, believe it or not, I have the same questions and, uh, comments, uh, as the, the mayor and councillor Silvitz. But I still have a few points to make out. So this report is mainly, um, just to ask council to extend the contract with the original, um, um, consultant. Through you, Madam Chair.
Through the chair, uh, the staff report is intended to be an update to let council know that we're continuing the project, and we will be following up with the same vendor and, um, having consultation process as a part of it.
So does the public consultation process include the council members?
Uh, uh, the, the consultation, uh, through the chair, sorry, the, the consultation hasn't defined as yet, and staff could always consider. Uh, we will report back to council, yes, and should council request feed, um, us reporting back at the midpoint, we would happily consider it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would like to, you know, have some input on, on, on what, you know, I, I think, uh, is appropriate there. Because this is the, uh, the entrance feature, the gateway, I think, is represent the character of the city. So I think when people, you know, when they're at that point, they know that what kind of city we are, this is the character of our, our, our own self. So is it, we, are we only talking about the median or also the surroundings?
So, through you, Madam Chair. Through the chair, this specific project is dedicated to the median itself. It's specific to the median. So there is a much larger, uh, streetscap, streetscape enhancements program. Uh, so a lot of streetscape enhancements were done as a part of phase one. And this is now phase two, where the actual, uh, gateway feature will be constructed. And the concept is to build it on the median itself, the central median.
Right. All right, thank you. Well, but if it's only the central median, there's only so much we can do. I think we have a lot of restrictions, it's limited our, our creativity. Anyways. It's limited our our creativity. Anyways, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have remarks? No, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on. Oh, I have a motion. So over to you, Mr. Clerk.
Um, uh, thank you, uh, and Madam Chair, and and you'd asked me to uh, provide advice when we got to this point. Uh, so you have a motion on the, a member's motion on the agenda, uh, and as committee knows, a a chair cannot move a motion. Normally, we would go to the vice chair of the committee uh, to chair the meeting, but uh, regional local councillor DePaula, i- who is the vice chair, is participating electronically and specifically in the procedure bylaw precludes a chair from chairing electronically. So I I I would like to uh, put it to the committee that you have two options, either another member could just move your motion, uh, uh, Chair Davidson, or uh, the committee could consent to another member chairing during this item, Bush President in the chamber, and I'm in your hands.
Uh, I I I don't want to be selfish, but I would, I I I would love to 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 move my own motion. Is that allowed?
So so then I would, I I would, uh, regional local councillor DePaula wants to just weigh in there for a second.
Go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, in in uh, in my absence as vice chair uh, in person and my inability to assume the chair, I'd I'd like to just nominate that Mayor West assume the chair for this one motion? If that's okay with committee and?
You need to show a hands for that?
I, I I would just ask if there's any objections.
Are there any objections?
Therefore, committee is consented to the mayor.
All right, over to you, Mayor West.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, so we actually have a member motion and it's from councillor Davidson. So uh, councillor Davidson, over to you.
Thank you. Um, so this is uh, just an opportunity for me in in Ward One to see if we can make use of some space that I see every day at the um, at the Gormley Go Station. There are huge, two huge parking lots. Only one is used and even sparsely at that. And um, I drive by every day when I drop our kids off and I wonder why, you know, the taxpayers have already paid for this huge section of parking lot that sits empty. It's actually closed for the most part. So I uh, contacted our uh, Minister Parsa and he connected us to Metrolinks. And it turns out there is opportunities for third parties to rent spaces like a completely empty parking lot at Go Station for Metrolinks. So my motion proposes that staff um, evaluate if using that space would be useful and affordable and make any sense for something like pickleball or tennis. And um, come back to council before, in time for us, if it's a yes, to have it uh, integrated into the twenty twenty-five budget. So it's a fishing expedition to see if this works and if it's worth the money. I will say the Premier announced extended Go service yesterday. It was not coming to that Richmond Hill line. So until I think there's major changes in terms of the Go schedule and the fact that those rails are not owned by Metrolinks, we have a pretty good bet that that space will be available long term. And since the West Gormley community is getting more and more populated, it would be great to have something closer to home before we get a chance to build the community center. So that's the motion and um, I hope my fellow colleagues support it.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, councillor. That that sounds very reasonable and very well presented, by the way. Uh, so I see regional local councillor Chan has his hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a chair now, um, I strongly support the motion and thank you, councillor Davidson, for putting it forward. I I'm just trying to say that yesterday at our uh, the capital sustainability committee, we did talk about looking at different options. And this is a really great opportunity with the staff report come back, there's an opportunity to either lease or even enter into some kind of partnership with Metrolinks, but the bottom line is all public money. So if we can maximize the usage while looking at vacant parking lot and improve the uh, recreational opportunities for our citizens, why not? Thank you. Good job. I mean, for supporting it of this.
Okay, councillor Silvitz?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. Um, uh, pretty much the same thing. I want to thank councillor Davidson for bringing this forward. It's very innovative. And um, I I think she's done a wonderful job here. Um, we can look at this perhaps as a as a pilot project because I do believe that we can also with councillor Thompson, I believe we can also look at Newkirk and Major McKenzie. And those parking lots are also not used anymore the way they used to be before uh, COVID. Um, the parking lot, especially the one uh, to the, the ones on the east side of Newkirk, um, especially the one uh, right at the top, uh, they're not, they're on not used a- at all. So that's also some empty space that's lying there that we could possibly work with the government to also do something there, even if it's just temporary. Um, uh, I I think this is a, this is such a great idea. And um, it it opens our eyes to to really make us look in in different directions as to how or where we can uh, we can make the best use of the land that is available within our boundaries, uh, which may not belong to us, but which we can still use. So again, thank you, councillor Davidson. Much appreciated.
Uh, thank you, councillor Liu.
Thank you, uh, uh, Mayor. Uh, this is a great idea, really, really great idea. Thank you, councillor Davidson. The only thing I I would like to uh, talk about is uh, is it possible that uh, we ask the province to give us the land instead of a long-term lease or rent? I don't know how possible because if we are going to turn this into a recreational facility, there's some cost on us, you know, we have to draw the lines for the basketball courts, uh, the pickleball courts. So shall we just, you know, first start asking for free then? And if they come back and said, well, no, 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 we need some money, then we talk about partnership. Yeah. One dollar, that's a good idea. Through you, Madam Chair, I'm just throwing out there.
Mr.?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it certainly will take that back, uh, the comment back councillor and we'll determine exactly what, I guess, the long-term needs are for that parking lot because that certainly will come into uh, into discussion with Metrolink. So we'll take that back and into consideration as part of our discussions with Metrolink.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else before we go second round? Okay, I I'll just make a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I I I actually really appreciate this is a very out of the box uh, fresh idea. And but in it, on the same token, it's actually kind of consistent with the types of out of the box thinkings that we were talking about at the capital sustainability committee with regard to partnerships. And uh, you know, I I want to be clear, I don't think this is necessarily the the uh, ultimate solution, for example, for pickleball. I I think we do need some dedicated pickleball courts, but that that is going to take some time. And as we saw with the pop-up courts at Richmond Green Snow Facility, which also was a very out of the box uh, way of doing things. And thank you to staff for that. Um, uh, you know, we were able to do that quickly. So I I I do, you know, I don't, I I tend in this business not to get too excited about things too early. Um, so I think this is a really good idea, but I I think as it's baked into this um, motion, you know, there's, there's a number of things that we need to consider. Councillor Liu just uh, you know, tou- touched on one of them. Uh, but I mean, it's certainly, certainly worth considering. It's not a ton of work for staff, I don't think, to be able to look into possibilities like that, although not insignificant, I would say. But uh, you know, the benefit to hit a home run on one of these types of ideas is significant for our community. So um, thank you councillor for uh, bringing this forward and and over to you. Does anybody else want a second round? So what, we'll go ahead, go to you for a second.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say there's another huge empty parking lot at Bloomington. So there are lots of options here and what a toned down version this is because I actually started asking if the um, four-story Bloomington parking lot could be affordable housing. So now I've gotten down to Gormley. So I think this is a great opportunity to work with with the province and they certainly seem willing um, and Metrolink. So those are my comments and I think I'm getting the vibe that this is going to be uh, passed.
Great. Okay, thanks a lot. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Pose that carries unanimously. And back to you councillor Davidson. Uh, cheers, back to you.
Thank you. And uh, the final act is a motion to adjourn. Councillor Silvitz, all those in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you so much.